We will now call to order the regular meeting of the Lompoc City Council for Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Ball.
Present.
Mayor Protem Gilda Cordova.
Here.
Mayor Janelle Osborne.
Here.
Now is your opportunity for oral communication on closed session. If you'd like to speak to the item, you may come forward and have three minutes. It's limited to the closed session. While we wait to see if anybody would like to speak to the item, we will read it into record. We have one item, conference with real property negotiators, approximately eighty-two acres, including and adjacent to Ken Adam Park, city negotiators, city manager, acting, Kristi Donnelly, city attorney Jeff Malave, negotiating parties or pale blue dot ventures in the city of Lompoc. Under negotiation is price and terms. Seeing no one come to the podium for oral communications, we will close that. We will reconvene the regular session of the city council at 6:30 PM. We will now reconvene the regular meeting of the Lompoc City Council meeting for Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Ball.
Here.
Mayor Protem Gilda Cordova.
Here.
Mayor Janelle Osborne.
Here.
Mr. Malave, do we have any reportable action from closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council met in closed session to discuss the one real property negotiations item on the agenda. The council gave direction to staff on that, but there was no reportable action.
Thank you. Is Ms. Dino Washington here for our invocation? All right, not seeing her, please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I think it's appropriate that I start with the Library Week proclamation, given I'm going to be doing quite a bit of reading this evening, given the number of proclamations that we have on the agenda. And I learned how to read as a result of the years I spent in the library. So it gives me great pleasure to have our library director, Sarah Blile, here to accept the proclamation for National Library Week 2024. Whereas libraries offer the opportunity for everyone to connect with others, learn new skills, and pursue their passions, no matter where they are in on their life's journey. And whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions, striving to ensure equitable access to information and services for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socio-economic status. And whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing need of our community, developing and expanding collections, programs, and services that are as diverse as the populations they serve. And whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals. And whereas libraries play a pivotal role in economic development by providing resources and support for job seekers, entrepreneurs, and small businesses, thus contributing to local prosperity and growth. And whereas libraries make choices that are good for the environment and make sense economically, creating thriving communities for a better tomorrow. And whereas libraries are treasured institutions that preserve our collective heritage and knowledge, safeguarding both physical and digital resources for present and future generations. And whereas libraries are an essential public good and fundamental institutions in democratic societies, working to improve society, protect the right to education and literacy, and promote the free exchange of information and ideas for all. And whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore I, Janelle Osborne, be it resolved that I proclaim National Library Week, April 7th through the 13th, 2024. During this week, I encourage all residents to connect with their library by visiting online, or more importantly, in person, to access the resources and services they provide. I know there are a lot of proclamations, so I'm going to be quick, but I did want to say that the theme for National Library Week is Ready Set Library, which promotes the idea that in our always-online world, libraries give us a green light to something truly special, a place to connect with others, learn new skills, and focus on what matters most. You can find your crew at our library programs, workshops, and book club, no matter where you find yourself on the roadmap through life's journey, in school, preparing for a new career, launching a business, raising a family, or taking some time for yourself. The library provides an inclusive and supportive community where everyone belongs. Get ready to explore, become inspired, and connect with your library this National Library Week. Libraries are there for you all the way to the finish line. This community loves our libraries, and they let us know that. Thank you, Lompoc, for being so supportive and generous. This one's very important to me personally as well. It is the DMV Donate Life California Month. My father-in-law passed away suddenly about ten years ago. As a result, he ended up donating his organs, and eight people now survive due to the choice by him and his family to make sure. And I was so moved by it, I now have a permanent pink dot on my driver's license. So I highly encourage you to consider it an opportunity to do something even once you are gone in helping continue lives. Whereas organ, eye, tissue, marrow, and blood donations are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need. And more than 110,000 individuals nationwide, and more than 23,000 in California are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list. And on average, 22 people die each day while waiting. And whereas the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic, Latino, and African-American communities, and a single individual's donations of the heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestines can save up to eight people's lives. And whereas donations of tissues can save and heal the lives of more than 75 others, and organ donors saved from more than 46,000 lives last year, the most ever, and any person can register to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor regardless of age or medical condition. And whereas being a registered donor does not impact the quality of life-saving medical care a person receives in an emergency. And whereas California residents can sign up with the Donate Life California donor registry online at any time by visiting www.donatelifeCalifornia.org, or for Spanish speakers at www.donvidaCalifornia.org. And whereas California residents can sign up to be organ, eye, and tissue donors when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID cards at the California Department of Motor Vehicles. California residents interested in saving a life through the living kidney donation may visit www.livingdonationcalifornia.org. Now therefore I, Janelle Osborne, mayor of the city of Lompoc, California, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2023 as DMV Donate Life California Month in the city of Lompoc, and encourage all Californians to check the yes when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID card. This will also be mailed to the Donate for Life organization and posted with all the other proclamations they receive down in Los Angeles. These two, I'd like to invite Anne McCarty up from the Northern California Rape Crisis Child Protective Center. It is unfortunate that we have to have these discussions, but it is important to still have them and bring awareness to these issues. So the first proclamation will be the Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month. Whereas child abuse and neglect are a community condition and problem, and finding solutions depends on involvement among people in the community. And whereas Child Welfare Services investigated 2,899 cases in the North County, 922 of those were here in the Lompoc area. And whereas the effects of child abuse and neglect are felt by whole communities and need to be addressed by the entire community. And whereas North County Rape Crisis and Child Protective Center and its CAPC partners have been committed to educating our community on child abuse and neglect and are sponsoring several events and social media posts throughout the month to heighten public awareness of abuse in the Northern County of Santa Barbara. These events will provide information and materials that support families to prevent child maltreatment and celebrate people who work with and support children and families. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, youth organizations, religious organizations, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, the business community, and residents. And whereas all residents should become more aware of the importance of the prevention in the community and become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe nurturing environment. Now therefore I, Janelle Osborne, mayor of the city of Lompoc, do hereby proclaim April 2024 as Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month in Lompoc, and call upon our citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their awareness of the efforts to prevent child abuse, thereby strengthening the community in which we live. Do you want me to stop?
No, let's just, let's just...
All right, keep going, all right.
I can speak to them both at the end.
All right, just wanted to make sure in case you wanted to separate them. All right, this one is the Proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month. They happen at the same time, unfortunately, but for good reason. Whereas people of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds fall victim to sexual assault, sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in this community. Rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment harm our community, and statistics show child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience a sexual assault before age eighteen. And whereas those numbers change to more than one in three women will experience sexual violence in their lifetime, and one in four men will experience sexual violence in their lifetime. And whereas rape and sexual violence of all kinds continues to occur at an alarming rate, with California having the most reported rapes in the United States, and with the Department of Justice stating that an American is sexually assaulted every ninety-eight seconds in the United States. And whereas emotional and physical scars resulting from sexual violence are often permanent, therefore working together to educate this community about sexual violence prevention, supporting survivors, and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions is so important. And whereas a coalition of organizations exists which directly confront this crisis, including North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center, law enforcement agencies, churches, healthcare providers, and volunteers from the community that serve these agencies, who are helping in the effort to end sexual assault. And whereas prevention is possible when everyone gets involved, increasing education awareness and community involvement, recognizing compassion and dedication of the individuals involved in this effort, and noting the challenge of the victim, survivors of sexual assault, and their families and friends as they struggle to cope with the reality of sexual violence. Now therefore I, Janelle Osborne, mayor of the city of Lompoc, do hereby recognize April 2024 as Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month, and encourage all residents and businesses to participate in a month full of recognition and activities promoted by the North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center to increase awareness of sexual assault and to create solutions in an effort to eliminate sexual violence from the city. Thank you for the work you do, Anne, and for all of your staff and volunteers.
And the reason that we clap is because there's an organization here in the city of Lompoc that is able to take on these challenges and do this work. And I think that that's a lot to celebrate. It's a lot to celebrate because we have been in this community for fifty years now. And for the city of Lompoc, that should be a lot to be proud of, because nonprofits struggle. There are many people in here that do work in the nonprofit realm, and you know that that's not easy. So even though the text in here is tough, and talking about rape, and child abuse, and human trafficking, all of that stuff is hard, but we have to look at what's working. And there is a lot working. The commitment that we have from the Lompoc Police Department, the commitment that we have from the San Robert County Sheriff's Department, and all of our other law enforcement partners that do this work with us, that's a lot to celebrate. Because there was a time prior to 1974 when there wasn't that commitment to provide services in such a succinct collaborative way for survivors of sexual assault, child abuse, and human trafficking. So I'm really proud of that. I'm also proud of the fact that I've been able to do this work now at the Rape Crisis Center. This is my thirtieth year, and that's a lot to be proud of. Thank you, thank you. The other, the other thing that's important to know is that people in this city are indeed getting help. I looked, I took a quick look at the numbers before I came over, and since July 1st of 2023, so in the last nine months, the Rape Crisis Center has provided direct services to 150 people. Now that might not seem like a lot, but when you think about the staff as small as we are, and this is just the Lompoc area, 150 is actually a lot. If you think back to the numbers in the proclamation where one in four and one in six, of those people that are being assaulted or have past abuse issues, only one in ten will report. So of the 150 people that came forward, do the math and think about how many people are still left to help. And that's what we want to make sure that we're strong enough to be able to do in their community. Now when we talk about our kids, the only way for us to eventually someday retire is to raise a healthy community, right? A healthy, happy community. And their children are still being hurt at alarming rates. Of the 150 people that received direct services, 29% of them were under the age of eighteen. I always have said, I've said every single year, I stand up here, one is too many. And I work every day. We all work every day to work ourselves out of a job. But we can't do it without y'all taking part as well. And listening to what the last two paragraphs of both proclamations were all about. Get involved, use your voice, stand up when you think something's not right, trust your gut, listen to your uh-oh feeling. We tell our kids that all the time. If something's not right, tell somebody. And I encourage every citizen in the city of Lompoc to do the same. Help us do our jobs. Volunteer, donate, do whatever. Just be an active bystander and help us. It helps the police, it helps the fire department, it helps our city be healthy and stronger. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Well, this one isn't going to take me very long, but I want to invite Travis Kalin to come up. Travis is a city employee that has been with us since April of 2001. And he's been doing work in areas that are sight unseen most of the time, or are so in our sights that he often deals with the issues that I get the phone calls for, I turn around and call his department, and he has to run out and deal with. So I just want to congratulate you, Travis, on the many years of service here with our city of Lompoc. Since being hired in April of 2001, your time with the wastewater, solid waste, streets, and facilities departments, as well as serving on the streets, shop steward for many years, have had a valuable impact on your coworkers and our community. And you will be missed, but we greatly appreciate it and look forward to seeing you enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
I'm just gonna get involved in politics, now you can run.
No, no. Don't go too far, because these are for you.
Oh, no!
I want to thank you for everything that you've done, when you come down to the meetings, when for Christmas you stop by and give us our little gifts, you go out to the special events, help us. I knew we had the right person when you helped us close down I Street that year for the, I think you brought in the bicycle for night.
That's brilliant.
Yeah. So I'd like to thank you, and thank you for my certificate.
Oh, no! You've been taught to, you're doing all the hard work.
Thank you.
All right, back to our regularly scheduled program. We have Kristi Donnelly as our acting city manager. So Ms. Donnelly, do you have a city manager report?
Thank you, yes. We're going to be pulling that up real quick. We have a slide. Thank you. We wanted to remind everybody about the state of the city. On April 11th, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, there has been a change in the venue, and it will be held now at the Dick DeWes Community and Senior Center. I was honored to be able to be part of the Lompoc-Bannenburgh Space Force Base Intergovernmental Service Agreement kickoff meeting. It's a mouthful, but it was, it was really informative, and I was really encouraged by the continued relationship building between Bannenburgh Space Force Base and the city of Lompoc. And I think that this is a first step in, in really establishing strong relationship and resiliency between our two communities. Thank you. And next, we want to say congratulations to the Peeps Diorama contest winners. First place was Barbie Peep House, and then two was Peeps The Secret Garden, and three was Peeps Band Together. I don't know if we can zoom in on those at all and, and look at, oh, maybe not. Okay, well, we tried. But they are so cute, and it's just so much fun to have that participation. So thank you to all of our, our participants in the Peeps Diorama. We've got spring break, daily rec swim this week for spring break, from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM through Friday. We want to encourage people to sign up for the Junior Giants with Parks and Rec. This is for ages five to thirteen. Registration is now available, and you can contact the Lompoc Parks and Rec Center for more information. And finally, we've got the mother-son luau registration is open. This is going to be held on Friday, May 10th, and Saturday, May 11th. The cost is $30 per pair, and then an additional $15 for each additional child. You are, we, we do require pre-registration, so please go ahead and go online to cityoflompoc.com/recreation, or you can contact the rec department. And I believe that is all that I have.
Great.
I, I do want to say that Dean has expressed his regrets that he couldn't be here tonight, so.
Any questions? All right, seeing none, we'll go on to consent calendar. If you would like to speak on any items on consent calendar tonight, it's items one through three. Now is your time to come to the podium. You may come up and have three minutes, or you may call in at 805-875-8201.
My name is Dale Willis, and I'd like to address the city council. We participate in a fireworks program every, every year, and it looks like we're going to have to be relocated to the, possibly the Dick DeWes Center. And the funds that we, that we get from that were used to develop our church at the old DMV building on 209 West Pine. And I'd like to just thank each and every one of you for considering the proposal that is about to be brought to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Council, so our community is dealing with an epidemic of overdoses. Why? What can we do about it? Well, here's something. Let's make Narcan more accessible to the community, because even people who aren't using drugs, they can still help somebody within this community. My wife and I, we keep a can, we keep Narcan in our car in case we see somebody in the community who might need it. And hundreds of lives could be saved within this community if more people had access to Narcan and more education about how to use it, because generations within this community are being wiped out. Some don't even realize what they're taking, and that's the sad part. We've had teenagers who've died within this community from smoking a joint handed to them by a friend. Now, we all know that cannabis would not have killed somebody. It had to have been laced with something, and it was. It was laced with fentanyl. And this is a big problem in our community. Our residents are dying, some even in the streets, in public view, and nothing is being done. Nothing is being done to help these people. We need something so that citizens can actually step in and try to render aid before medics get there, because it could take them ten minutes to get across town. What's going to happen in those ten minutes? Somebody could die in those ten minutes when you're waiting for help to get there. So I think there should be an event, maybe at Ryan Park, and you know what? Let's have some people involved with, with drug counseling, with narcotics, with a whole bunch of different agencies, with resources, and just have them hand out Narcan to people, no questions asked, just, you want some? Go ahead, take some. Keep it in your car if you have to, because that's the only thing that will save lives within this community. Thank you.
I'd just like to remind the public, this is comments on consent calendar at the moment. General oral communication will come after. If you would like to speak on items one through three, you're welcome to come to the podium.
Start button. Hi, Madam Mayor. I'm Louis Linney. I am vice president with TNT Fireworks, and I promise I won't even need the three minutes. But I'd like to, first off, I'm here in case you have any specific questions about the item, the proposed lease that is in front of you in the consent calendar, or if you have any general questions on safe and sane fireworks or fireworks here in Lompoc. But honestly, moreover, I felt it important enough to come to Fresno, because as you folks know, everyone loves jumping up and down and getting irate when somebody doesn't do their job at City Hall, or when they've got a comment or a complaint or a problem. And I just wanted to point out that we had incredible help from two of your employees, from Dean Albro, who is not here tonight, who took a call on this probably early last week, immediately moved on it. And then we also were greatly facilitated in moving this, to this agenda tonight, from Terry Schwab. And I just thought it was nice to point that out, that there were people who really went out of their way to try and facilitate your consideration of Pastor Willis's request, and that's all. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I just wanted to speak in support of the consent calendar item number three to, I'm just going to urge the council to approve that item, in, just to help out our local nonprofits, and that they can use, use that location for TNT fireworks and And having volunteered in the past with another local nonprofit organization, that is a great fundraising opportunity for nonprofits, and they can make quite a bit of profit from that short couple weeks of selling fireworks. And it allows the public that doesn't otherwise have a big fireworks show that, you know, since we don't have that anymore in Lompoc, gives them the opportunity to buy safe, and they're mostly low-ground-based fireworks, and a lot of fun items for the kids as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no one else rise and no one call in, we will close this and bring it back. Consent calendar is considered to be routine, and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from the consent calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communications near the end of the meeting. Is there an item council would like to pull or have any questions on? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Councilmember Vega.
I'll make a motion that we accept consent calendar.
I'll second.
Councilmember Vega moved, and Councilmember Ball seconded. Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. We do not have any staff presentations or announcements or requests tonight, as far as I can see. So now, we will move on to oral communications. This is three minutes to address items within the city's purvey that are not on the agenda. If you would like to come forward, you have three minutes. If you'd like to call in, the number to call is 805-875-8201, and you will have three minutes.
Hello, just real quick. Hello, Council, my name is Ryan Hashimoto, and I reside in the Briar Creek neighborhood on the westernmost side of Lompoc. Today, I want to address an issue concerning traffic safety on Western Avenue in Lompoc. This particular stretch of roadway contains multiple blind curves and has become a concern in our neighborhood because of excessive speeding. Drivers seem to be testing their vehicles' limitations by accelerating around these blind curves. This happens mostly during the evening hours, and is so dramatic that you can sometimes hear the vehicle tires breaking traction. It should be noted that mirrors have been installed on the light poles around these blind curves to improve visibility and prevent collisions. However, based on the speed of some of these vehicles, the mirrors may be insufficient in addressing the reckless driving on the street. Although I'm a car enthusiast and I understand the urge to test the capabilities of the vehicles, this area is frequented by families, including individuals walking their pets, exercising, and, most importantly, young children who play and ride bicycles on the established bike path just feet from the roadway. It should also be noted that there is a park where children play baseball near the intersection of Western and Briar Creek Way. To address this concern, I'm requesting two simple things. First, I'm requesting an increase in police patrols along the... I'm sorry, the Western Avenue intersection of Briar Creek Way to deter potential speeders. However, I realize that Lompoc PD may be too busy to accomplish this, so I would also like to request additional signage in the area denoting that children are at play. So by taking these steps, we can work towards fostering a safer environment on Western Avenue, preventing potential accidents, and fostering safe streets and sidewalks for our residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. Steve Bridge, 40-year resident. I think you guys know I only get up here when I think something's important, and I have a little apprehension, because last time there was a question like this, I was accused of being a racist. But I believe it's important to ask something if it seems questionable. I'm sure by now we've all read the report, its findings and recommendations, and it's already going through the city grapevine that our city thinks the grand jury is simply unable to understand complex issues. I remember the last time the grand jury did this. They came out condemning Lompoc for lack of oversight. This report seems eerily similar to the last one. The last one was the city failed to receive legally mandated financial reports. It was a black mark on the city, and it was embarrassing. The relationship of Visit Lompoc and sitting council peoples have been questioned for years. Mr. Binder has repeatedly identified reasonable questions. Mr. Starbuck has requested contract compliance reviews be reinstituted, and for whatever reason, this all seems to fall on deaf ears. For those who are following Visit Lompoc, we've noticed a few things. We have a sitting council person who's the president. That organization is closely related to the hotel industry. That council person's primary source of income. Visit Lompoc reportedly repeatedly turns down requests for fundings from organizations like Riverbend Park, annual music concerts, and the Flower Festival, which funds particulars hotels' favorite charity golf tournaments. It's very common for our independent hotels that are part of the T-bid to claim they are not treated fairly, and the T-bid favors certain hotels over others. Visit Lompoc self-promotes with banners on city light poles. How the city was able to place those seems a mystery. It also has a booth in Old Town Market with sitting council person handing out free swag. Now, I know what I'm pointing out is well-known to the council, and it seems that our council believes there is no technical conflict. But anyone who's gone through ethics trainings has learned the old adage, and it goes like this. If you wonder whether something is appropriate or not, you ask yourself a simple question. Would I be happy if I woke up one morning and found it plastered on the front page of newspapers? Well, today, you can perform a simple Google search, and you will find Lompoc City and its relationship with Visit Lompoc on the front page of every local journalist organization. It's rampant on social media. So in closing, I would like to recommend, if only for transparency and appearance, that the City of Lompoc follow all the recommendations of the grand jury. With special interest, that the City of Lompoc completes an independent financial audit, and that Visit Lompoc performs an internal audit of not only the financial, but also the operational approach to spending the allocated funds. And finally, that the city performs a review of how it regards conflict of interest rules when related to organizations such as that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Scott Burns. I meant to come here earlier.
Well, there is your proclamation for Donate Life.
Hopefully, you've already read it, and I apologize.
I did. I'm so glad we don't have to mail it to you. That's okay, you came.
We won't mention how it happened. We'll leave it at that.
At least you're not... You got here safely, which is important.
I want to show you guys a couple of things. The lady whose kidney I have, Vivian Butel, was a nurse at Cottage Hospital. She died suddenly. I was on a friend's sailboat in Santa Cruz Island. This was 2015. Since then, I've gotten to know her family. We get together. We do a run-walk every year, and this is our Live Like Viv t-shirt that we give out. She was a very nice person, and I've gotten to know her family very well. With the Donate Life event, which this is from last year, this will go down to the Donate Life event. It'll be shown with other cities that are supporting Donate Life, and then it'll go to the Lompoc DMV, and it'll be there for about a year, until I come back in a year from now. A couple of quick comments, just so you know what's going on with the organ donation world. Donate Life will now have an office in Carpinteria to work on Santa Barbara County, because the one in Azusa is just a long way away, so they can work with the hospitals a lot closer. The other item, more at a state level, the last year, AB 1268 was passed, so that not only will you be getting able to check your driver's license... Get your... That's easy for me to say. Get the pink dot on your driver's license. You're also going to be able to, next year, with the state income tax, be able to be asked the same question, because most people do their income tax every year, and now the DMV is every five years. So thank you very much for this. I do apologize that I'm running late, but I wanted to let you know I was...
Again, better late than not here at all.
Thank you.
And thank you for the work you're doing.
Hello, can you hear me? Sorry, my voice is a little... Anyway, I just wanted to follow up on another comment that someone did make earlier regarding the... It's the 2023/2023/2024 Santa Barbara County Grand Jury Report Regarding City of Lompoc and Visit Lompoc LLC. So I printed this out, because I wanted to just kind of look at it myself, and a few things I thought... And anyone can go and just print this out. It's about... Nine pages, and then just a few highlights that I thought were interesting, or perhaps just the recommendations, if I have time to read through these. Recommendation 1A. Lompoc City Council shall instruct Visit Lompoc to have an independent audit performed of their annual reports and present the findings to the council no later than mid-2024. Recommendation 1B. Visit Lompoc shall use excess funds under its control to fund this audit. Recommendation 2A. Lompoc City Council shall instruct Visit Lompoc to have an independent audit performed of their financial records and present the findings to the council no later than mid-2024. Recommendation 2B. Visit Lompoc shall use excess funds under its control to fund this audit. Recommendation 3. Lompoc City Council shall address the accounting discrepancies by amending the agreement and holding Visit Lompoc accountable for reporting all funds, including any excess, or mandating that all excess funds less than an approved contingency amount be utilized for purposes related to enhancing tourism, and such and so forth. So this continues on. Sorry, I'm losing my voice, so I'm having trouble reading this out as efficiently as I would like to do so. So I just thought this was interesting information. I printed it out, and it's, to my awareness, more than like five or six people find this information relevant, and it just should be looked into further. And I think that the city actually has been presented with this information, and has the 90 days, to my understanding, to return with more information. So thank you. I'm just curious to find out myself what's happening with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had way too many computer tabs open in my brain the last time I stood up here, and I completely forgot what I wanted to tell you all about the pinwheels. This is important. So as you've known, for the last several years, we have planted pinwheels around northern Santa Barbara County that represent the children that have been abused in our county. You know, you look at a pinwheel blowing in the wind, it signifies an innocence. And when a child is abused, their innocence is lost. But we have a way to get that back. And I'm going to challenge all of city staff, city staff there in here, members of Lompoc Police Department, let this be a traveling bucket, because change happens with tiny pushes. And the ripple effect of people knowing and talking about the issues of sexual assault and child abuse, they shouldn't be in the shadows. They should be talked about. They need to be discussed. They need to be dinner conversations. They shouldn't be in the shadows. Take this bucket, sit it in front of you, take a picture, post it on social media, tag the Rape Crisis Center, let more people know that the City of Lompoc will not stand for child abuse, will not stand for sexual assault, or human trafficking. It takes all of us banding together. And when you drive by the Rape Crisis Center, we don't have them all planted yet, but when you drive by the Rape Crisis Center, think about that when you see those pinwheels blowing in the wind. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you believe we have a caller? Are you ready? Hello, I'm going to come up to you, and then she'll come on, and she'll let you know you can start speaking, okay? Good evening. Good evening, you're live in the Lompoc City Council Chamber. You have three minutes to give your public comment. Please go ahead.
Yes, we have a beehole, standing beehole. I can remember when they did Ocean Avenue and New Road and the street I live on that was around here before I got it. There's so many roads in this city that are ruined, rotten. This city should put some tax dollars into the city roads. Take care of them. We need the potholes. We need to take care of them. Let them do something. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you. I believe the gentleman was speaking to how nice it was to have Ocean Avenue paved, but that city roads need to be addressed, and that there are a lot of potholes that need to be addressed. That was the general gist of what I could hear. All right, seeing no one else rise and no one else call, we will close oral communications, and we will come back to the agenda. The next item on the agenda is appointments. We have a couple of committees with openings and a few applications tonight. The first one is the Airport Commission. We have one at-large term ending 1/2025, and three at-large terms ending 1/2028. And we have two applicants, David Hughes and Brad Mandibles. I believe both have served on in the past, and are pilots. I will entertain a motion. Councilmember Cordova.
I would recommend David Hughes to be on one of the three-year at-large terms.
So through 1/2028? All right. Can I add to your motion that we nominate Mr. Mandibles to the term ending 1/2025?
Absolutely.
All right, so I'll give you a second. Any other questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Welcome aboard, and thank you for your service. That means we have a quorum, I believe, for Airport Commission. All right, our Library Commission has two vacancies, one ending in 1/2025, and the other term ending 1/2026. We have two applicants, Joe Valencia and Olivia Magagna. Councilmember Ball.
So I'm not sure which one should take which, but I'll nominate Mrs. Olivia Magagna for the term ending in 2026.
All right, so I would ask that you consider Mr. Valencia for the 2025?
Second.
All right. So we have Ms. Magagna for the 2026, and Mr. Valencia for the 2025. I would ask that Councilmember Ball make the full motion, and I will give you a second, so that it's not two different motions with weird seconds.
Okay, so we're going to nominate Mrs. Olivia Magagna for the term ending in 2026, and Mr. Joe Valencia for the term ending in 2025.
There we go, and I'll give you a second on that one. All right, seeing no one have any questions, we'll vote. And that passes 5-0. Madam Clerk, did we have any written communications?
No, ma'am, nothing.
All right. The only one I received that I did want to bring up, and I believe all of the city council received one, was from the Employee Development Association Board thanking us for the fireworks program again, and working on the response to it. So I just wanted to bring that to attention. We are working on that issue. All right, this is your final opportunity for oral communications for this evening. If you would like to speak, you now have two minutes. You may call in at 805-875-8201, or you may come to the podium. And while we give it a few seconds, I just want to say that even more of a reason to go to the library this week, not only that it's National Library Week, but to go see the Peeps displays before everybody picks them up, because they're even more awesome in person than just in the photos, and they were very entertaining. All right. We will now close general oral communications and bring it back to council. Councilmember Starbuck, anything to report?
Oh, I'm first. I have a minor council request that I'd like to make, and you know, I know it's hard to compete with Peep Dioramas and stuff, but stay with me. On the future council agendas, contract complacency has been listed to be held in August, tentatively August. It's not listed solid as an August event. Based upon events that are going on, I would really like to move my council request... Based upon events that are going on, I would really like to move my council request ahead, move them to where we can work on this sooner than ever, you know? Right now, I've got a council request for May 2nd and July 18th having to do with contracts and contract complacency and monitoring. We haven't had our monitoring report, our meeting yet. I have talked to some of the staff, but we've not done it officially. Where I know there are three contracts, they're out of complacency, minor. Their audit schedule's different than the city's audit schedule, but still needs to be looked at. The other is, you know, here we are again with a grand jury review for the same thing that we were doing 10 years ago, failure of oversight. And a reply is requested. I think it would behoove us to have our contract complacency meeting well in discussion before we turn in our replies to the grand jury. And I would think that we would want to do an audit on all of our contracts that are hanging out other than the three that we know are delinquent in accordance with the grand jury recommendation. I made this statement a while back. When things are good, staff looks good. When things get washy and dirty, it's the council and we look like we need a bath right now. So if we could do anything as a council to say, "Staff, please make this a priority and bring it back to us so we can look at it," I would appreciate it.
Councilmember Ball.
So I don't know if this is, you're asking for some sort of action. I think that's, I completely agree. I think there's a lot of speculation, a lot of uncertainty within the community, a lot of questions to be answered. I think that that's appropriate, that we get on top of that as quickly as possible. So not sure what you're asking for specifically, but if there's a way to move up the timeline and for us to find clarity and answer some questions, I think that's a good thing. So I'd second that.
So it's already been a council request and it's already on the agenda. So we would look for staff to come back and let us know if they could accelerate it. And I'm not sure if the staff responsible for those is here tonight to tell us, the council, whether they could accelerate it.
We can, we can look at accelerating it. I hear, I hear the request. I would need to look at staff schedules to be able to make sure that we can, when we can bring it back. I, this is the first that I'm hearing a request before August, so let's go ahead and look and see what we can do.
Okay. Thank you for that. All right, anything else, Mr. Starbuck?
No other reports.
All right, Councilmember Vega.
Nothing to report.
All right, Councilmember Cordova.
I have no reports.
Thank you. Councilmember Ball.
Yeah, just to follow up on that, again, there's something due back to the grand jury in 90 days. For me, as a city council person, to feel comfortable, I think it's important for us to deal with a lot of this within that timeline because I agree completely, unless we have clarity and some sort of answers within that timeline, then I don't think council can have a good judgment on that. So as soon as possible.
All right. The past, since the last council meeting, I attended the Project Opioid monthly meeting for the request earlier about access to Narcan. It is readily available. You can walk into the Sheriff's Department. They will hand out Narcan at anyone's request. There is a tutorial that you watch from a QR code on how to use that. Pacific Pride Foundation, once a month, once a week, is here on Mondays. You can go to them and they hand out the Narcan without any question. So it is already readily available. If you would like some, if you would like the training, it is easily accessible. And I believe there is also, with the state, an online forum to get it as well. So it is far more readily available than it used to be. And testing strips are about to be readily available. I do know that Pacific Pride has the testing strips, but the state legislature has taken it off illegal substance list and made it legal to get testing strips to see whether or not what you have has fentanyl in it and help you make a decision, a wise decision, hopefully, not to use drugs. But if you're going to use them, there are test strips that can tell you if there's fentanyl in it because often it's put into drugs that normally you wouldn't find it in it. And that is part of Project Opioid, is moving that forward. I also attended the Cal City's Transportation Communications and Public Works Quarterly Meeting. I sit on that and we focus on legislative issues coming to cities and how they would impact those particular areas and make recommendations back to Cal Cities to either support or fight certain state legislation that comes down at us. I also attended our Northern California Power Agency's Regular and Executive Committee meetings in this past month. And I participated in the Youth Leadership Lompoc Valley's City Government Tour on Friday. We had students come through, toured the city hall, understand what city government does here and how the city council works. And then, last but not least, I presented a certificate to Vargas Jewelers for their 50th anniversary and attended their celebration. And just want to say congratulations to them and all businesses and nonprofits that have and are celebrating 50 years within our community. So that being said, we will adjourn this meeting until the next regular meeting of the Lompoc City Council at 6:30 PM on April 16th, 2024.